Okay, it's almost time to get started. We've got about a minute to go, so grab your last-minute coffee, tea, drinks that you might like to sip on during the next hour, and then we'll start. I'd also ask for those that didn't grab a pen and piece of paper to do so now, so that you can write questions down. We will be having an open audience time for questions, so please, it's up here by our coffee and tea, so please do that before we start. Okay, well, welcome. It's good to see so many people here. Thank you for all being here. Everyone should have checked in at the front, because we have a voting procedure that I'll go over in more detail in just a bit, but to get your delegate stickers. I want to thank our candidates, who are all sitting here before you, our central committee members and our guests, and I want to say a special thank you to MCAT, who is filming tonight as part of a grant that we were able to get, and this will be available on Channel 189 at a later date, so just watch for that. We'll put it on our website when it is available. So next I'll explain a bit about our forum process before I introduce our candidates. Our forum will start, we've got our agenda up, our forum will start with openings from all our candidates, we'll have some questions from the audience, and then they'll have their closing remarks. There's a time limit for everything, because we've got nine candidates, and we have a lot of questions for them and a lot to go over, so their openings will be one and a half minutes, their answers for each of the questions will be one minute, and we're going to do a lightning round, and then the closings will be 30 seconds. Then we'll take a break. So I'll ask the candidates just to please keep to the time limits. You'll see Todd will be standing in front of you with a time card that will tell you that you're out of time, and I will let you finish a sentence, but I will step in and ask you to wrap up as gently and as firmly as I can. Then we'll take a break, and then it will become our business meeting, and that's when we will vote on our endorsements. So with that, I'd like to ask the candidates to introduce themselves, and keep writing down your questions, audience, because we'll be collecting them at a later time. So let's start with Ward 1. If you'd introduce yourself and give your opening remarks.
Thank you. These are not bendy. Okay. Hi, I'm Heidi West, and I currently represent Ward 1. I came to local politics from a place of grassroots neighborhood activism, when I helped organize folks around the cleanup of the White Pine Sash Superfund site. It was through that experience and the relationships that I built in that process that I felt empowered to run for city council. At the time, my household was low-income, I was priced out of the job market, and I'm familiar with some of the challenges and many of the benefits of making Missoula home. In 2015, it was the lack of representation of people like me that finalized my decision to run for office. Over the past four years, a few things have changed. Both my kids are now in public school, and I work for the North Missoula Community Development Corporation, where I develop permanently affordable housing. I also have a policy record that speaks to my qualifications as a candidate. There have been many big and little things that council has accomplished, but I would like to highlight my resolution in support of the Clean Power Plan rule, followed by a resolution standing in solidarity with the Indigenous resistance to the Dakota Access Pipeline, followed by my effort to divest the city's monetary accounts from Wells Fargo. Over the next four years, I will continue to serve my community and my personal, public, and professional life.
Elizabeth?
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Weaver, and I currently work at the Montana Food Bank Network as the SNAP Outreach Coordinator. SNAP stands for the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, which is formerly known as FoodStamps. I am a single-income, proud heart-of-Missoula resident who rents, because currently I can't afford to buy a home in our city. Service and community are two important values that have been instilled in me since I was a kid and have shaped who I've become, both personally and professionally. Service is actually what brought me to Missoula six and a half years ago. As an AmeriCorps Vista, I served two terms with Montana Legal Services here in Missoula, working to expand civil legal aid through their pro bono program. For me, serving on city councils is like the next step to how I get to really bring my passions to the city that I love. I think that it is important, Missoula is growing, and with that comes both opportunities and challenges, and as we have the conversation about how we're moving forward, I think it's important to have a diversity of voices at the table, a diversity of lived experience, diversity of backgrounds, even diversity of opinions, and I would love to be able to be part of that conversation and bring the experience and expertise that I have. I have a background in policy, the work that I do now is federally regulated programs, so I speak to a lot-
Elizabeth, thank you, your time is up.
Sorry.
But thank you. Okay, Amber?
My name is Amber Schaefer, and I was born here in Missoula. Sorry, I'm really nervous. I grew up as a part of a really large northside family. My grandparents ran a neighborhood market for 26 years, and my grandmother served on city council and actually was Secretary of this committee as well. So I learned from a really young age the importance of being involved in local politics and just caring for your neighbors. So the reason I'm choosing to run now is because of the increase in property taxes. My dad is of retirement age, and it's really painful to someone, to watch someone who's worked really hard their whole lives, been incredibly generous their entire lives, to be worried about being able to fully retire and what that will look like for him and if he'll be able to stay in his home. Second of all, the crime, the addiction, and the homelessness that we see in our ward has just become overwhelming for me, and it's really cool to get to see my two kids go to the same school I went to, but that school now is just blocks away from the Poverello, and that has affected their day-to-day life at school, and I don't think any children or faculty should be worried about their safety while they're in one of our schools. Last but not least, I'm also a proud member of the Assistant Wapton Oyate Nation from South Dakota, and I would be very proud to bring more diversity to our council.
Thank you, Amber. Myrta?
Thank you all for the, is this on?
Yeah.
Thank you all for the opportunity tonight to give me a little bit of time to tell you a little bit more about myself.
Is the mic on?
It's green, but... Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit more about who I am and why I want to serve. I moved here in 2002, and like many of you, I never wanted to leave. I moved here with a master's degree in urban planning from the University of New York, and I served for, I worked for 10 years for the city and Missoula County, both as a land use planner and a transportation planner. I was appointed to city council about a year and a half ago to fill a vacancy for Ward 2. I served on all the committees, and it's been a tremendous learning experience for me, so I believe that the combination of my professional experience, commitment to this community, and serving on the city council for a year and a half, put me in a good position to tackle some of the issues that I think we're facing, and that together as a community we need to bring to the forefront of a lot of the decisions that we make, chiefly affordable housing, transportation, growth and development, and our environment. So with your support, I hope that I can continue to be a voice for change, innovation, progress, and equality. Thanks.
Thank you, Myrta. Gwen?
Good evening. My name is Gwen Jones. I am an attorney, I'm an incumbent in Ward 3, I've served for three and a half years, and I'm a Democrat, and I'm just going to jump in and talk about two issues that I think are really important. The first is Missoula Redevelopment Agency and tax increment financing. I feel like there is really a false narrative that has been created by Jesse Ramos and some of his people, that this is a bad program and that this is the cause of our property tax issues. I think that's entirely false, and it really concerns me, because as a progressive, I think we all want to see good infrastructure go in that benefits our environment. We want to see sidewalks, we want to see affordable housing projects, and when we partner with the private sector to create that tax increment that then can accomplish those goals, along with funding projects that will address the Poverello and homeless issues, that's a really critical piece in terms of our long-term planning that we have as a community. I think the narrative has also been created that MRA is the problem, TIF is the problem, that's why we have high property taxes, and I think as a community, we really need to start talking about tax reform. Our economy in Montana has changed around us, from natural resources to tourism. We're not taxing tourism. Legislature has made a lot of decisions, and our state and federal governments have made a lot of decisions.
Gwen, your time is almost up.
And we've become the backstop, so we need to diversify our tax base.
Thank you so much. Amber?
Can you guys hear me? Oh yeah, I can hear myself. I'm Amber Sherrill, and I have lived in Ward 4 for 19 years. I'm a Democrat. I vote, I have volunteered extensively, and my bid for city council is, to me, the next level of my community service for a city that I love. For the past two years, I served as interim executive director of Five Valleys Land Trust. In that role, I led the county open space bond and city stewardship levy to success. I prioritized objectives based on an annual budget, developed and managed a wide array of community partnerships, supervised numerous projects, and kept our commitments to the many generous volunteers and donors in our community. I've served as a board president of Five Valleys Land Trust, on the board of the Missoula Economic Partnership, as well as the board of the Montana Association of Land Trusts, and was part of the county land use technical advisory committee. These experiences have shown me the importance of ethical leadership, working with diverse groups, strategic and collaborative thinking, as well as prioritizing based on available funding. I hope to earn the Missoula County Democrats endorsement tonight, and I'm thankful that you're all here and having us at this forum. Thanks.
Thank you, Amber. Is Greg Strandberg in the audience? Nope, okay. Nick Schatz?
Thank you. My name is Nick Schatz, and I'm running for city council in Ward 6. I have been Missoulian for 17 years. The first nine of those years were on the north side, and then the rest of the time has been in the River Road neighborhood. For the last six years, I've participated in the River Road Neighborhood Leadership Team and Community Forum, and through those efforts, I really have learned a lot about Missoula and how that grassroots experience can really make positive change in our community. I'm lucky enough to live here with my wife and son, who will be freshmen at Hellgate next year. I spent the first 11 years of my career at the University of Montana, working as a programmer, developer, and eventually a manager. I spent that time working, leading teams at the university, working on budgets, and I think that experience has shaped the way I would approach, you know, getting creative in the world of finite resources. I look forward to finding ways to make housing more affordable in Missoula, to continue Missoula's efforts in leading climate change discussion in Montana. And we have to, you know, plan and fund for the growth of transportation emergency services as Missoula grows.
Nick, your time's almost up. One more sentence.
And with your support, I can do that in Ward 6. Thank you.
Okay, thank you to all our candidates. Leanne, could you pull up the slide about our process? Thank you. You read my mind. So there's two candidates who completed questionnaires that aren't here tonight. One is Greg Strandberg, and the other is, just a minute, Alex Fragario. They both completed their questionnaires, so they will be considered tonight. Our policy is that all the candidates you see before us have completed questionnaires by the due date. They did, but our policy doesn't state that they have to be present at this meeting. So with that, I want to go over a few things before, while you write down your questions. We've got a couple folks collecting your questions. See Mary with the red basket and hold up your hand if you have a question you want to put in there. So our existing policy was used, we didn't change it, although we're a new e-board, and I did forget something. My name's Karen Wickersham, and I'm the chair of the Missoula County Democrats. I've got to get used to saying that first. Just one second, let me go through this, Ben. All candidates that filed were given the same opportunity to complete a questionnaire to seek our endorsement tonight. Only candidates with the completed questionnaires submitted by the deadline would be considered for our endorsement per our existing policy. So I have the specific dates, but there were nine candidates that completed it by that date, and you as central committee members were all mailed by Todd Mowbray, the completed questionnaires, and there are some up here, too, if you'd like to take a look, but everyone got them on the 30th. So, and we're just sticking to our policy tonight, so I wanted to go through all of that before we start out with questions. And we're not in the business format yet, so I'll take your question later. This is for the endorsement of these candidates' time.
I'm not going to do this right now, Karen.
Okay.
I'm going with things, you know, what you've done.
Okay, thank you, Ben. All right. So with that, while they're gathering up the questions, I'm going to ask Nancy and Chase to please step aside, and the rest of the e-board and our committee stay in here so we can hear the answers to a couple questions, and then they're going to go through the ears. Mary, there's two more over here that have questions. So to keep to our timeframe, everyone gets one and a half minutes to answer these questions. So what I'm going to do, in fairness to all the candidates, is I'm going to mix it up as I go down the line, so I'm not always starting with Nick, but I am going to start with him this time.
All right.
And then each candidate will answer. If you are an incumbent, why do you deserve to be re-elected? If you are challenging an incumbent, why do you deserve to be elected over the incumbent? And if you are in an open ward, what makes you the best candidate?
I believe that I'm the best candidate for Ward 6, because I think that I best embody the spirit of Missoula. Missoula has been a wonderful community, and it, you know, it's clear that we support progressive values, and I feel like I embody that. My time at the university, working through that bureaucracy, has given me a lot of good experience, and my time with the Missoula, or the River Road, excuse me, River Road Leadership Team, and my time on Community Forum are all experiences that have informed my understanding of how Missoula works, and I look forward to, you know, using that experience and knowledge to keep Missoula awesome.
Thanks, Nick. Amber?
I think I'm the best candidate in my ward, partly because I have experience in leadership, both at the board level and at the NGO level. I decided to run because when I saw John Devare was no longer going to be a candidate, I thought there was a hole there, and also because when I was leading the Open Space Bond campaign, I recognized all the competing interests that were happening in Missoula, and I feel like we're at a time that it's important to have candidates in city council, or having city councilors that understand that you need to have a collaborative approach, you need to pull different groups in, and you need to take input from a lot of different areas to make a decision as we move forward as a city.
Thank you. Gwen?
I've thought a lot about why I ran originally and why I want to run again. I grew up in this town, and I have raised my three kids in the same ward that I grew up in, so I have very deep roots here. I have spent a lot of time on city council. I've spent a huge amount of time, my husband would say too much time, frankly, to the neglect of other things, but I really love doing it, and as an attorney, I found my skill set was a really good match, and having spent the 10 years when I wasn't working and I was raising kids before I went back to practice law, I did a huge amount of volunteering, and that actually, at the time, I just liked doing it, but in retrospect, it gave me a lot of skills for how to work with people, how to communicate, how to collaborate, so that's been very valuable, and I have really, I have a policy where I work, I do my best to try and return emails, I answer phone calls and return phone calls, and I go to meetings, and I go to coffee with people, and I spend a lot of time doing that, and I always get something out of it, and it shows up later on, and it's very valuable. I've also spent a lot of time getting several different pieces of legislation through, which takes a lot of work, years of work. It sounds simple, and it's very hard, so I've built those relationships, and I think I'm in a very constructive place now.
Thank you.
To contribute.
Thank you. Myrta?
I did not grow up in Missoula, or this country for that matter, and I believe that growing up in a politically troubled nation has given me a great appreciation for the democratic system that we have here, and it also taught me that you have to start by building up your community and working at the local level if you want to make any significant change. I have worked for 10 years, my entire professional career, as a land use and transportation planner for the city and the county. I think that shows commitment to my community and seeing progress in my community. I was also president of the board for Homeward, so I have a deep appreciation for what the issues are that are facing our community as it relates to affordable housing, both for homeownership and rental opportunities. Lastly, I believe that we need to work together to ensure that our kids, I have two kids, and I want to see Missoula be the best that it can be for that generation. Thanks.
Thank you, Myrta. Amber?
I think what makes me the best candidate for this ward is that I am just a regular Missoulian. I didn't really know what I was getting myself into, I just knew that I wanted to see a change in what was happening down at City Hall, and decided that I could either be like my friends, family, and colleagues and voice my opinions on social media, or I could get involved and do something about it. So here I am, and I've been researching everything I can, listening to residents of our ward, and I know that I'm not the only one that feels that my voice isn't being represented in this town, and so I'd like to switch things up and be able to give a new voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
I think I'm the best candidate for Ward 1, because I'm a little bit of a different candidate. As I mentioned before, I'm a single-income, single household, and I'm a renter. I also have had experience in some government and leadership positions. I've served on the Board of Directors in an executive role for Missoula Urban Demonstration Project, and I currently sit on CFAC's Food Access Committee. I have a background in policy, I have a bachelor's in communications and political science, and also a master's degree in social justice and intercultural relations, and I look forward to bringing the different lens, both that I have from professional experience and education, to working on the issues that I'm seeing in the heart of Missoula and in the rest of Ward 1.
Thank you. Heidi?
There we go. It's on now. Thank you. So I, when I moved to Missoula, I, my husband was a Vista for the, for MUD, for the Missoula Urban Demonstration Project, and I lived on-site, and that was my first introduction to Missoula. And after that, during that time, I also volunteered for the ZAC. I volunteered through the, at the Garden City Harvest Volunteers for Veggies program, and then went on to co-chair the PTA at the Lowell Elementary School, and joined our Neighborhood Leadership Team and was our Community Forum representative before I joined the Missoula City Council. For the last four years, I have served on all of the committees, and I think my voting record supports the same values that we all share in this room. I'm also not afraid to disagree with my colleagues respectfully. For example, I disagreed with the rest of council around the issuance of a demolition permit for the Merck, and I think that being able to work together and disagree and be able to, you know, validate everyone's viewpoint is really important. I usually handle the stress of elections when I'm not running for office myself by working as an elections judge. I believe in the process that we have, and I do my best to be a part of making sure that our process is as inclusive as it can be.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to mix it up a little bit and start in the middle. Myrta? And could I ask Charlie or Todd, where's Todd, to help me time? That would be really helpful, if you could come up, and I've got the time cards here. And your moderator didn't read my instructions well, so for the next round of questions, you don't have one and a half minutes, you have one minute. Okay. Starting with Myrta and going down that way, and then we'll come back up with Gwen and go down this way. What will you do, or have done, to protect our community from gun violence?
I was not on council when Missoula worked on this issue, so I'm not the, I don't have extensive knowledge on it, but I do believe that what we are doing is that the very least, the very minimum that we can do. I believe that we need to have really strong background checks. I believe that we need to ensure our community that we have a process in place. I think we need to work harder to make sure that it is an enforceable issue, and I will, given the opportunity, I will work really hard to make sure that we provide stronger and more Missoula-based systems in place for gun control.
Thank you. Amber?
I would have also supported the ordinance requiring the background check for any private sales within city limits. I respect our right to keep and bear arms, and I understand how important it is for so many Missoulians to own guns, not only just for recreation, but also just to feed their families. However, in my research, I think a lot of the public doesn't understand what the background check process is that we're using, and that some of the laws, the right to privacy versus Montana's right to knows laws, how that applies to these background checks. I think that we think maybe it's, speaking for the public myself, that I didn't know this, that, that there's just things that are not being checked or reported because of those laws. So we just maybe better educate what we're checking for and how that applies to everyday Missoulians.
Okay, thank you, Amber. Elizabeth?
I wasn't on the council, obviously, in 2016 when they passed the gun ordinance, but I would have supported it, because I do believe that we do need background checks, although I am a supporter of the Second Amendment, I'm a hunter, so I own a firearm. But I do believe that we do need to have background checks, so that those that have committed egregious violence towards others or have felony- committed egregious violence towards others or have felony records are not permitted to have handguns. But with that, I also think that we have to have a conversation too around mental health and how we're also addressing that in the relation to the folks that are obtaining firearms and to use them for egregious purposes as well.
Thank you. Heidi.
Hi. Thank you. I was on council when we passed the background check ordinance, and I still think that responsible gun ownership is common sense and that we should be aware of, you know, the backgrounds of folks during the, in those transactions. But I also wanted to point out that there's two large demographics that are victims of gun violence, and those are women in domestic violence situations and also in Montana, obviously, folks that commit suicide. And we also have the opportunity to fund programs that prevent, you know, domestic violence and model what healthy relationships and consent looks like. And we also fund suicide prevention programs and educate, you know, the public on how to intervene on behalf of folks who may be suicidals.
Thank you, Heidi. Gwen.
I was on council when we passed the background check ordinance, and thank you Brian Von Losberg for that heavy lift. It was an easy vote, although it took a huge amount of energy and time because it's a big issue, but for me personally, it was an easy vote because it's just common sense. And if we're not at a point in this country when we can start applying common sense to gun laws, it's not good. But I think another, another way in which I've supported gun safety has been four years ago when I campaigned that first time is when the Big School Bond was on the ballot. And when I was campaigning then, I tried to bring that up as often as I could because I was totally in favor of it. And frankly, those school bonds did many, many upgrades in all of the schools, but safety in school entrances was a big component, and I thought that was a base level thing that needed to be addressed in our community. And I think in general, there's all sorts of, you know, a well-trained police and fire department for all of the mental health calls that we get these days, social services, those are, those are all key. And we keep working on it, but we need tax reforms.
Thank you. Thank you, Gwen. Amber.
So I think that this is, this is an issue that I feel pretty strongly about. I have two daughters in high school. I have one of those daughters who is very politically active, going to all the protests. She has no problem voicing her opinion, which I love on one hand, and on the other hand, it worries me. So I was not on council. I would definitely have voted for it. I would support even more, more penalties potentially for businesses that don't follow that. And I agree about the mental health aspect of it. I think that's a really important piece. You know, as I was saying, one of the things that I saw at Five Valleys is that we did need a collaborative approach, we did need lots of different people at the table, and I think that that's the same at this.
Thank you, Amber. Nick. Nick.
I also would have supported the, the background check ordinance had I had the opportunity to. When my son was choosing which high school he wanted to go to, somebody had told him that one of the schools had a gun violence problem. And that's pretty hard to hear from a 13-year-old. Like, that's the thing that our kids are thinking about. Excuse me. I'm a gun owner and hunter in Montana, and I have, you know, gone through that background check a number of times and never felt like it was a burden. I also agree that we need to make sure that Montana is reporting to that background check database all the things that it, that it ought to be to make sure that those background checks are actually doing what they're supposed to.
Thank you, Nick. Okay, we'll start with Heidi this time. And one minute for each answer. What do you think is the single most important part of the recently adopted housing policy?
That is a really hard question, in part because this is also what I do in my everyday work life. I think that establishing local funding sources that are under our control are hugely important. As some of you maybe know, there basically are three or four organizations that are, there's three, approved to use HUD funds for housing development in our community, and those are limited. They get less every year, just on how HUD allocates funding to entitlement communities. And being able to partner or, or match that funding with a local funding source that isn't under jeopardy whenever our federal government threatens to take away those funding sources is vitally important for all of our housing needs, whether it's rental, housing, chronically homeless people, or homeownership opportunities.
Thank you, Heidi. Amber. Oh, I'm sorry, Elizabeth.
That is a very loaded question, and I would have to say that, looking at the council that they passed yesterday with the, in relation to the HUD goals, I was very pleased to see Goal 3, which was relating to homelessness, and how we can look at targeting HUD funding in that. And I think that around our entire homeless list plan, A Place to Call Home, looking at what we're doing for the affordable housing, but also in that transitional housing and wet housing, as we see our homeless population being growing, and there are concerns there that even to get them into an apartment or rental is important, that applying funding wherever we can get it, both private and public funding, to that issue is important.
Thank you. Now Amber.
One area that really stuck out for me was creating incentives for developers. And I want to really, I work part-time for the Missoula Building Industry Association, so I work with builders every day. I hear what they're going through. They also want to be a part of the solution, and as you can see, there's two great names here, Dave Edgell and Gene Mostad, that were included in the study. And there are two men that have created their businesses here, their children have grown up here, they're passing their businesses on to their children. And so I just think we really need to make sure that the incentives that we create are enticing enough to them to want to participate and to continue participating. Because they want to, it just has to make sense for both them and Missoula. They're very open to all of these ideas. And I just think that we need to remember for, we use the term developer a lot, but when in Missoula, a lot of these are just small-town guys that started, you know, one, two guys that now are lucky enough to have, you know, crews of maybe 20, some of them still have crews of 10 to 15. Thanks.
Thank you. Myrta.
I think you asked what the most important part of the policy is, and I would say, you know, after spending a lot of time working on the policy and sitting in all the meetings with all the different groups that participated, I would say that one of the most challenging things is going to be to have that continued conversation, to have everyone who has been at the table to remain at the table as we move on to the implementation of the policy. The policy provides a number of really good, potentially very useful tools, and I think it's going to be a challenge to pick the ones that are going to be the most effective for Missoula. I think we need to tailor what those tools are going to be, the right combination. And I think we need to balance establishing a trust fund with incentives and regulations. So I think that the challenge is going to be the implementation.
Thank you. Gwen.
I think the most important part of our affordable housing policy is the trust fund that we would like to set up. And how we get there, I don't know at this point, and it definitely is going to be a challenge, but I think having that big sum of money that is the seed money on projects that makes the equations work, makes them pencil out, helps us leverage other funds to get in, that's, that's very crucial, and that would really move us forward in this category. We just have a lack of, of seed money. Last winter, I went to Helena and testified in front of the Housing Board for the, in favor, well, in support of the 9% tax credits for the first Skyview housing proposal. We were number nine. They gave it to the first eight. We were, we were next in line. We were very close. We did not get it, but after it was all said and done, everyone stayed in the room, all of the applicants and the board members. And the board members frankly said, "We need more money that we need to be giving out. You guys need to talk to the legislature." So on all sides, we're seeing it. We need that seed money, and I think that's really important.
Thank you, Gwen. Amber.
It's really confusing having two Ambers up here for me. It's not, that's not a situation I'm in very often. As Erin Pahan, I've heard her say, "We are not going to build our way out of this." I think that's a really important message, and we're not going to do it without having these incentives for builders. So I would agree that we need incentives, that we need to figure out how we're going to fund the housing trust fund. There are some ideas. And, you know, another piece is we're going to have to figure out how we are going to leverage these funds again and again and again. And I agree that the challenge is that, the implementation of it.
Thank you, Amber. Nick.
I guess I think, like, the most important thing is just having a policy that we can fall back on to guide our future decisions. I also think, you know, bringing existing efforts together and collecting data so that we have good information that we can use to make decisions for the next, you know, 100 years of, of Missoula growth.
Thank you. This is our last of the audience questions, so I would ask if there's any other audience questions, last call, because we have some lightning round questions. Those of you that sat through the Commissioner Forum know about that. So just raise your hand and we'll have one of the E-Board members get those questions from you. So let's start with Gwen and come this way towards Nick, and then pick it up with Myrta and go down towards Amber, I mean Heidi. Would you support the elimination of the MRA? Why or why not?
Well, this is a good one to start with since I already talked about it, but thanks. No, I would not support the elimination of the MRA. I think it's a critical, long-term tool that we have here, and I'd like to point out that the MRA legislation was written when he was in the legislature by Dan Camas, a former, former mayor of Missoula. I think we are always, this community should always have discussions as to whether or not the MRA priorities should be tweaked or changed, and that's something that I think is an ongoing discussion. But to eliminate it eliminates our one tool that we have to not only grow our economy, but invest in our town and provide a lot of those common or public good products like sidewalks and infrastructure, affordable housing, that we have no other tool to address. So no, we should not eliminate MRA.
Thank you, Gwen. Amber.
I agree with what Gwen just said. I also feel like as a city council and as an elected official, the priority that we need to always keep in mind is that we are making these decisions for the future, we're making them for all of our kids, we're making them for our kids' kids, and we need to keep our eye on that in the long run. I would not support the elimination of MRA. I think it's done some very good things. I do think that, as Gwen said, it's important that we review periodically what we, what the priorities of that organization need to be. And we may be at a point right now that it's time to do that review, so I would support a review, but not the elimination.
Thank you, Amber. Nick.
No, I would not support the elimination of the MRA. I think TIF funding is an excellent tool to help guide developers as we build out infrastructure in Missoula. I would support further communication efforts to talk about how TIF funding works and how MRA decisions are made, because I do, I agree with Gwen, there's a real false narrative around how that money is collected and what it does for our community.
Thank you, Nick. Myrta.
Absolutely not. I think the MRA and TIF funding is an investment tool that has proven successful in improving our downtown. I think that it has been proven successful at helping provide affordable housing, sidewalks, infrastructure, cleaning up brownfield sites. I think that the priorities that the MRA uses for allocating funds should certainly be revised. Times change, everything changes, so we need to take a second look at that, but most certainly, I don't think it should be eliminated.
Thank you. Amber.
I would not completely eliminate the MRA. I don't agree with a lot of their decisions, and I know I'm not alone in the public, and I think, again, it's an education thing. I've learned so much about TIF, about MRA, since deciding to run, and people ask me all the time, "What is TIF?" or "How does it exactly work?" So we have a job to inform the public, answer their questions, and I don't know how to push that out more to them, if it's social media, if it's commercials, what it is. But we're not doing enough to make it clear, because there's definitely situations where TIF can be used for good, the $144,000 to the YWCA's program, that's an awesome project, and it goes to domestic abuse and addressing some of those issues of homelessness. But things like extending those from, the URDs from 15 to 40 years when we are looking for more revenue is just something that we really need to think about.
Thank you. Elizabeth.
At the risk of sounding like a broken record with some of my other candidates at the table, I think Councilwoman Jones hit the nail on the head when she said, "Absolutely not," and then went on to cite the reasons. The YWCA is a great example of how the MRA has been effective, as has the Old Sawmill District, but I do also agree that some reexamination of how the MRA is implemented and used would be key in moving forward.
Thank you. Heidi.
I also agree with pretty much everything that's been said, and I just wanted to highlight that we owe much of our trail network, as well as sidewalk infrastructure in some areas of town, and several affordable housing projects to impart the MRA, and including private development. The Scott Street Village Development over on the north side had significant MRA support, as did Clark Fork Commons, which is an NMCDC development, Lee Gordon Place, also the most recent NMCDC development, and Homeward Sweetgrass Commons, and none of those projects would have penciled. The other thing that it supports is, you know, parks, for example, Dragon Hollow Downtown just got $50,000, $50,000 grant from the MRA, which is really exciting.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to mix it up a little bit and have a lightning round. Todd and Klaus are going to help me by handing out paper and markers to you all. And I'm going to ask you a question. You will all have, let's see. You'll all have 30 seconds. No, I'm sorry. No, you don't have 30 seconds. No, you don't. Otherwise, that kind of defies the word lightning, doesn't it? Okay. So I'm going to ask you a question. I want you to write down the answer, and then I'm going to ask you to hold up your answer all at the same time. And hold them up high. And I'll go down and read for the audience to make sure we've got all the answers that everyone can see. Are you ready, candidates? Okay. Okay. Are you guys ready? All right. Do you consider healthcare a human right? Yes or no? Hold up your answer. Do I need to read these off or can the audience see? Hold them up high. Okay, was that unanimous? Okay. Next question. Candidates ready? Do you support LGBTQ plus rights? Okay, hold up your answers, please. Do we have all yeses? All yeses? Okay, is there a darker marker? You can pass down to Amber. I think you. Amber Sherrill. Okay. Are you ready? We're getting darker markers for some. We're getting darker markers for some. Okay. Everyone ready? Do you support resettling refugees in Missoula? Yes or no? Hold them up. All yeses? Oh, great. Okay. Next question. What is the top thing the Missoula, the city of Missoula can do to address the climate crisis? This is not a yes or no. What is the top thing Missoula City can do to address the climate crisis? Give you just a second more. Okay. Hold up your answer, please. All right, now I'm going to read them. Oh my goodness, I have to come really close for that one, Amber. Okay, Heidi's still writing. All right, Amber's still ready. Everybody up, everybody up. Okay. All right, Heidi. Update old homes with energy efficiency. Elizabeth Weaver, invest in more clean energy like mountain line electric buses. Amber Schaefer, encourage more carpooling, alternative transportation. Myrta Becerra, urban forest. Gwen Jones, plant trees. Amber Sherrill, carbon emissions reductions measures. And Nick, find ways to reduce waste to zero. All right. That put me to some work. Let's see, the next one is also not a yes or no. Candidates ready? What would you consider a fair minimum wage in Missoula? Okay, we have two answers up. Everybody up? Okay. Let's see. Going down the line, Heidi, 18. Elizabeth, 15. Amber, Schaefer, 12. Myrta, 16. Gwen, 15. Amber Sherrill, livable wage, 15. And Nick, 15. Okay, next question. Are you pro-choice? Are you pro-choice? That's a yes. Okay. This is not a yes or no. What is the greatest current threat to citizens in Missoula? Okay. I'll read them as I go down the line. Heidi West says apathy. Elizabeth Weaver, lack of mental health services. Amber Schaefer, addiction. Myrta, cost of living. Gwen Jones, climate change. Amber Sherrill, population growth and not planning for downstream fallout. Nick Chaunce, climate change. And is my mic still working real well? Can you guys all hear me? Okay. This is a yes or no. Would you accept campaign support or an endorsement from Republican City Councilmember Jesse Ramos? Okay, so, we've got Heidi West, no. Elizabeth Weaver, no. Amber Schaefer, yes, I already did. Myrta, hell no. Gwen, no. Amber Sherrill, no. Nick Chaunce, no. Yes or no? Does Missoula have a responsibility to respond to increasing hate crimes in our area? Yeah, you don't want to mix your yeses and nos up here. Everyone says yes. Should U.S. public lands stay public, be turned over to the state, or be privatized? Again, public, state, or privatized for public lands. Says public. Stay public, public lands. Which Democratic Party leader, historical or present, present, do you most admire? I'm going to give you just a few extra seconds here. This is a tough one. Okay. Everybody, hold theirs up. Oh, excuse me. Okay, Nick? Nick says Obama. Amber Sherrill says Obama. Gwen Jones says BK Wheeler. Myrta says Obama. Amber's thinking, and she just wrote Obama. Elizabeth says JFK. And Heidi West says Bernie. Okay. Last lightning round question. Do you support the Missoula City Council's action to require background checks on all gun sales? I think we heard this earlier, but let's go for it. Okay, I see all yeses. All right, that concludes the lightning round portion of our program. Thank you. Okay. Before I call Chase to the podium, and is Chase, there you are. Our hope is that this process thoroughly vets our candidates to assure all those receiving our endorsements clearly and specifically embrace our democratic values. I want to call Chase Gay, the Vice Chair of the Missoula County Democrats, to the podium before we break. And I want to thank the candidates. You did a good job. What we're going to do now, is Chase is going to have a bit to say. He'll call us to break, and then we'll, we'll come back after a 15-minute break.
To our city and what is at stake. And I'm guessing most of you in here will recognize at least one of these corrupt politicians, Mitch McConnell. And the other one is a city council member here in Missoula named Jesse Ramos. And I think this photo serves as a glimpse into Jesse's worldview and the way he thinks, and the kind of leaders that he wants to emulate. He said on this photo, and I quote, "Truly an honor to visit with the greatest political tactician of our lifetime." High praise. High praise for a guy that brags about stealing a Supreme Court seat. The great tactician Mitch McConnell, who has time and time again voted to gut services for Irel Montana, as well as their assault on rural America, who's called himself the Grim Reaper of progressive policies. Jesse thinks it's an honor to meet with a man who is responsible for child abuse that is ongoing at our southern border. Sounds like Jesse finds all this pretty admirable. And it's apparent that Jesse is nothing but a political ladder climber, a puppet of national republican desires to wreck our community. And next up, we see Jesse at a Koch Brothers training event. The Americas for Prosperity Leadership Training, Conservative Dark Money. A group responsible for the growth of the Tea Party, for their nationwide assault on our unions, on our climate, on our teachers, on public schools and healthcare. Heck, they're assaulting Facts and Logic now, too. And they want to strip our community of any investment and progress. They think they can sink their claws into Missoula, and that Jesse is the avenue to do so. And Jesse is gung ho about helping them out. Now Jesse is not up for reelection this November, but he has bragged about how he is a symbol of candidate that he is backing and giving support to in each and every ward. He's got the Republicans getting organized to back these Koch Brother candidates, hoping they can install an AstroTurf Army on our city council. This threat is real, and it is here. He thinks we're asleep at the wheel, that we have grown complacent, that we are disorganized, that he and his candidates can use misinformation and lies to turn our city council into a nightmare world dreamed up by Mitch McConnell and the Koch Brothers. And we are not going to let that happen. We are not going to let that happen, because I see lots of folks in here that have tons of fire and energy, and they are ready to get to work. These past couple weeks, everybody's been watching and seeing what's going on at the border, what these politicians have enabled because of their cruelty, and what others have encouraged because of their silence, concentration camps right here in America. And we are not content to wait until 2020 to fight back against that sort of behavior and those sort of political ideals. We will start now, and we will keep going, and we will not stop. We will not let pillagers wreck our community. And we are going to put our foot down to the Mitch McConnell wannabes, to the Koch Brother puppets. And we are lucky, we are lucky, because we're going to combine the energy and the passion and the dedication of a rejuvenated Democratic Party with some of the best leaders our community has to offer and that we have seen here tonight. We're going to elect leaders that have been fierce defenders of our community and the values that have made Missoula the envy of many. I know you will be proud to spread the word and volunteer all over this community for some of these candidates sitting next to me. Candidates who have demonstrated their commitment and dedication to the future and well-being of this community through their tireless advocacy and work. Candidates that are going to base their future decisions on city council, on facts, and on reason, and on what is best for our community and its residents. These are candidates that are worth every bit as much of our energy as Senator Tester was in 2018. Every bit, and that is not an exaggeration. They are going to impact our community directly and positively every single time they meet. So I'm asking everybody here tonight to sign up, commit, to volunteer, or help out in some capacity with the candidates that we are about to endorse tonight. We've got a volunteer signup sheet on the front desk. And contribute in whatever way you can, and no experience is needed. We're going to have Canvas in 101, a training at the Union Club coming up soon. And if you can't knock doors, make phone calls. If you can't make phone calls, give money. If you can't give money, like and share the candidate's post on Facebook. Because it all matters. And we are going to protect Missoula from these outside national republican interests that Jesse Ramos wants to bring here to Missoula. So with all that said, we're going to take a 10-minute break. And at the end of our break, our Chair Karen is going to convene the business meeting, and we will make these endorsements and get started on protecting Missoula. Thank you.
Okay, let's reconvene. Grab your last bits of food and, and drink before we start. Okay. LeAnn, would you cue the slide of the voting procedure? All right. Hope everybody got something to munch on and drink. Thank you to all those that brought food for everyone. Let's give them a round of applause, and thanks for all that nice food. That helps. Helps breaking of the bread. So, with this, I want to talk about our voting process for tonight. Our ballots have been pre-prepared. You may vote for as many as you want to endorse. Members may vote for one in wards two, three, five, and six. They may vote for one, two, or three in Ward one, and one or two in Ward five. Ward four. Thank you. At this point, I'm going to open the room for discussion. We're going to do it like we did at the city, at the County Commissioner Forum, which worked really well. I'd like people to come over here and line up along here. We'll scoot the chairs over, just in the interest of time, so you can stand before the group, say what you want to say, and then we don't have to wait between people wanting to stand up. So I just ask you to start your line over here. I'm going to ask people to be brief and to the point. It's 8:30. And we, I'm also going to ask that all remarks, because we are here, the purpose of this meeting is to endorse our city council, just one sec, to endorse the city council candidates. There are nine of them. Their names will be on the screen. LeAnn, you want to put in, and we're going to come back to that slide once you get your ballots, as soon as the discussion's over. We will come back to that, so it's with all clarity, you can look at who's, who's being considered. So with that, I will ask those speaking, again, to be brief and to focus their remarks, not on process, not on any other candidates that aren't represented here, that we haven't talked about tonight. There's nine candidates listed up there, so keep your remarks to those nine candidates. And with that, Ben, you're up.
Thank you, Karen. At the risk of diverging from what you just said, LeAnn, can you please pull up the rules that were published up here? Okay, this is the Democratic Party. State law says we have to have our rules on file with the elections office. These rules aren't on file. They say things like we can't do write-ins. But the head of the College Democrats is running, and tried to turn his application in one day late. And so they said he can't be considered. So Dakota Hillman's not on the list. Now, four years ago, that happened to Inman. And I'm, I'm going to continue, this is the Democratic Party, we're talking about endorsing people. I'm a Central Committee member. I don't think anything I'm doing is out of order. I will not return this mic, please don't touch me. Well, I'm, I'm just trying to speak. Okay.
I'll respectfully give it back to you, Ben. So, with what you just said, I want to overrule that part of the discussion, because we're keeping it limited to this. At another time, I would be happy to entertain your complaints and your concerns. Now is not the time nor the place. And I will correct you in that there was no request one day late. The request was to turn it in two to three days late. I don't know what you've been told, but I've got, I've got that in writing. So on that, I want to move on now with the candidates that did all turn their questionnaires in on time. And I'm adhering to a previous policy where it said only candidates who have completed questionnaires will be considered. So with that, I'd like to ask Stacy to come up, and I'm overruling you. Okay? Is there a second to that motion? Okay. Thanks. Now, is there a discussion on that? The, the motion was to overrule the Chair in asking Ben to delay his complaints and concerns to another time when we're not all gathered here, and to reconsider that at another time. So with that, now, it's been, the motion's been heard and seconded by Steve Wells. I'm going to, now it's open for discussion. Klaus?
I think this motion needs to be defeated. We had a very clear procedure. There was, there were no secrets. Everybody knew when it was due. And to make an exception for a single person is just simply unfair. So we should support the ruling of the Chair and vote in favor of the ruling of the Chair.
Is there more discussion? Kevin?
I obviously wasn't here at the time, but I've been informed that there is a precedent that goes contrary to that position. And I believe that if there was an Anglo person who was given that exception previously, we should not now deny the same exception to a native person. This seems basic to me. What is the problem?
Okay. I believe that we have to get beyond our own personal desires for who the candidates are and start running our elections in a way that we come across as fair and even-handed. And when we have a white woman who gets a special meeting so that she can be endorsed, and then we have a native gay man who is a couple of days late, and we don't just say, okay, well, we can't include your, well, one thing we could have done is just said we can't include your statements, but you could come and participate and that would settle it. This way, we're going to have to have an extra different meeting here coming up very soon in order to be able to endorse the Chair of the U of M College Democrats because he's a good Democrat. And our rules, our bylaws say that you can't pick Democrats, the party can't pick Democrats in the primary.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
I'd urge the committee to not support the motion, to support the rule of the Chair. With all due respect, I'm really tired of the rules baloney that Ben is bringing up, meeting after meeting after meeting. And it takes away time from our focus. And I'd urge the delegates not to vote for the motion.
Point not taken. Are there, no, just a minute. I will, I will, I will. Calls a question, there's been a calls a question. Okay.
I won't touch it, I won't touch it. I'll even give it back, I promise. Mr. Facy, I appreciate your comments and I really respect the amount of work that you've done for decades in this town. You and I know each other from your first primary and you know how to win elections. The way we know when elections is not by excluding people. The local Democratic Party has been concealing from the Central Committee multiple lawsuits, Commissioner of Political Practices complaints that are valid, violations of ethical rules. And when we passed a law in Montana that required our rules to be filed at the elections office, the very first thing pretty much after that rule became effective that we did was we broke that law. And now we're breaking it again tonight. We know two and four years ago that we let people sneak into the endorsement process because they were good Democrats. And I'm asking today to speak in favor of candidates I think we should endorse as good Democrats. The Chair has ruled that I'm out of order for talking about the process that we're using. But when the process doesn't even allow the consideration of the College Democratic President, the process doesn't even-
That's not personal privilege anymore. Thank you. We're still in the discussion mode. We've got more people that want to discuss, so I'm going to give them the same opportunity you just had, Ben.
Oh, sorry, yes. Okay, well, I was just recognized, but I'm not going to do what I thought I was going to do. Oh, no, okay. I, sorry. I support the ruling of the Chair because I think that there is a clear deadline. Fair is fair. If for some reason a particular candidate didn't have the opportunity to give their questionnaire in on time like everyone else, they could have had the opportunity to reach out and communicate that with the Chair. And she is a reasonable and understanding person and accommodations would have been made. But to ask for an extension after you've received everybody else's answers to the questionnaire, I do feel is a little unfair. And with that, I will call the question.
Okay. More discussion on this motion.
Marilyn Ryan, I call the question.
Okay. The motion to call the question has been made and seconded. So with that, I'm going to ask for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, all those in favor, we're going to do a voice vote. All those in favor of upholding the Chair's decision to- All of, okay. I didn't hear that the motion was to close debates. Robert's rules is going to get me. All right. All right. Okay. The motion to close the debate is on the floor and has been made and seconded. All those in favor of closing the debate, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Now my parliamentarian, what's next? Now we can proceed? Okay. Now we're voting on my decision, okay, now we're voting on my decision to, no, now we're voting on the decision to stay on track, to discuss only the nine candidates that completed questionnaires in the deadline. And so the Chair's decision was made in fairness to the nine that did get their questionnaires in on time. All those in favor of upholding the Chair's decision to stay with the nine that completed theirs, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Stacy, you're up. Okay. Ben, what I would ask is, if you have something to say, only about the nine candidates without going into the process or the candidate that didn't get their application in on time, I will, really, okay.
Once upon a time, there was a candidate who was very brave in our Central Committee, and that was Heidi West. And so I wanted to thank you for all the work you've done on city council. I also want to say that I really think that if folks were interested in making sure that Democrats were supported, that probably some Democrats who are running would want to step up, and I'm disappointed that they haven't. But I really do think that Gwen Jones deserves support in Ward three as well. I don't know enough about the other candidates, everybody impressed me, but those two in particular deserve our endorsement.
Thank you, Ben. Stacy.
Okay. Hi, I'm Stacy Anderson. I have the privilege of representing Missoula City Council Ward five, and I'm also a member of the Central Committee here. And you all heard a lot from me during the county commissioners' debate. So I am here to speak on a few candidates, and I will try to be brief, but please just allow me a little bit of time. I want to speak on behalf of Alex Figariot. He was not able to make it tonight, and he is running to be my fellow wardmate in Ward five. His summer vacation was already scheduled for this week, many months in advance before he knew. And I do want to just clarify a little bit. Julie Armstrong is not running and we will be having a special, she is not on the ballot, and we will be having a special city council meeting tomorrow to not have a primary in that race. So any concerned about incumbency on that, have no fear. It's just Alex and another gentleman running in the general election come November. And I just want to read a little bit about Alex. He first decided to get involved because he partake, or he did the Citizens Academy, and he's been involved in his neighborhood council. He's a native of Montana, and he, these are his words, "I have known that this state was a special place ever since my first trip to Glacier Park at the age of four. After seeing the light and transferring from Montana State to the University of Montana", go Grizz, once again, his words, but I agree. "In 2004, it became clear to me that my very first semester at school that this was a very special city, and it would be my home, and I wanted to make it my home ever since. Since graduating at the University of Montana, my career path has been varied. I've been in secondary education, construction, as well as a small business owner. This assortment of experience and a vast array of industries has given me a well-rounded understanding of what diverse place Missoula is and the trying but important task of balancing the needs of all Missoulians as well and moving our city into the future." And his campaign pillars are communication, housing and taxes. And I encourage you to endorse him, and you all got a chance to see his questionnaire. I also want to take a quick moment to advocate for endorsement of my fellow city councilwoman, Heidi West. She is a true advocate for affordable housing. She works tirelessly on this issue as well as many on the city council. She championed or expand, what she didn't say in her voting record is she's the one who led the way with Emily Brock to expand our paid family leave program. She brings a diversity in affordable housing and asks very intelligent questions and brings a very unique perspective that I think is very important on this council, given the fact that we just endorsed, or we just passed a very aspirational housing policy, and now we need to get to work on it. I also encourage an endorsement of Mirta Basara. She is the only person on city council who has a planning background, which I think is very important. And when you think about the incredibly complex issues around land use and planning, as someone who sits on that committee, her background as a professional is just invaluable. And I think it's really important that we have an opportunity to have an immigrant on our city council. We are a community that embraces immigrants. And she, you know, is caring and compassionate and just brings a totally different worldview that it brings a richness to our council that I appreciate every day. And Gwen Jones is the vice, yeah, sorry, Gwen Jones is the Vice President or Vice Chair of Council, and she works tirelessly. I do think that this is probably more of her full-time job than her actual full-time job. She spent over a year, one year, working on one piece of legislation, which is the Regisseur Apprentice Program that we just passed that is actually going to be a model for other communities. And the National Head of the AFL-CIO was here in Missoula a couple of weeks ago, and he specifically called her out and said this is now a model piece of legislation that can be used in other communities. And she is the one, along with Heather Harp, who worked to champion that, and she deserves our sole endorsement because she is an incumbent with a very impressive voting record and that, you know, I think shows that she is heads and tails above everybody else running that. And then Amber Sherrill, I think, really demonstrated the importance of bringing coalitions together and with her work on the Open Space Bond, and that is incredibly key in working in the city council. And then Nick Shantz and his involvement in the neighborhood council is so, that is grassroots at its very, very bottom level, and he brings that passion and commitment to the city and I think deserves your endorsement too. So with that, I hope that you support all of those people. Thank you so much for your time and being here and part of the process, and I look forward to seeing you out on the doors to help all these great candidates get reelected this fall, or elected and reelected. So, thanks.
Thank you. Come on up, a little further up so you're in the middle here. And I'm going to cough a bit. I apologize. I came, I woke up with a cold this morning, so I'm going to step away from the mic. Oh, thank you. So you're up.
Never go after Stacy. My name is Brian Von Losberg. I currently serve on city council, co-representing Ward one with my colleague Heidi West. And I also have the honor to serve as council president. I wanted to quickly say many of the same things that Stacy just said, but a couple points I will reiterate. Wanted to lend my support to my wardmate. I was involved with her, and she mentioned this in her advocacy for the Northside Neighborhood with the White Pine Sash site, it's where I got to know Heidi the best. And it was what convinced me to approach her, to suggest that she run for council. So I take a lot of pride in the fact that I think I was the first person to approach you about it, and I think that has, the results have borne out from that, and it's an honor to serve with you, and I hope that she'll get your endorsement. And I wanted to also mention Alex, who couldn't be here, as Stacy said. He's reached out, we've had some great conversations about council. He did complete the questionnaire, and as Stacy mentioned, he completed the Citizens Academy. I think that's to his credit, and I hope he'll receive an endorsement. The other folks who are up here in the other wards as well. And I wanted to kind of close the circle on this question of endorsements because it's come up from one of our colleagues, Mr. Ramos. The reason I think it's come up that I think people should wrestle with from an endorsement standpoint is, Amber, I appreciate your answers to the questions. I think the question that the endorsement raises is that Jesse has advocated against a number of the things that you mentioned that you support, and I appreciate you mentioning your support for those things. But it's a question out there, the background checks ordinance, which I was obviously intimately involved with. Jesse's been on NRETV multiple times in bashing a locally-elected judge, mistating the state law around the ordinance, and basically spreading disinformation about that. That's a cause for concern. He advocated in the budget for eliminating the subsidy that the city partners with a lot of other organizations for, the $100,000 for Mountain Lion. I was glad to see in your questionnaire that you supported that. But again, it raises this question around his endorsement, given his advocacy around these other issues and the conflict there. So I wanted to at least, for me, it's not about the person. When you serve on council, you have an opportunity to express your values in your votes, and there's a conflict there between that endorsement and those positions. So I wanted to close that loop for folks in the audience. Thanks.
So I have six candidates that I'm advocating for, for endorsement. And in Ward one, we've got Heidi West. And I thought Heidi did an excellent job of breaking down some very complex issues on a questionnaire. I hope everybody gets a chance to read them. I became better informed after having read it because these are complicated subjects, and she works hard on city council and will continue to work hard as well. In Ward two, Mirta Basara. Mirta always brings thoughtfulness and a willingness to listen to the community's concerns whenever she makes decisions on city council. If you want someone qualified and with a vast experience in the various things that city council addresses, Mirta Basara is your candidate. Mirta has developed an expertise on the subjects of land use, zoning, annexation and transportation, and that is an expertise that we need to keep on the city council. Mirta has dedicated an immense amount of her time to ensuring that Missoula continues to move forward, and she deserves our full-fledged support. In Ward three, Gwen Jones. When we talk about leadership and people who can get things done, we're talking about Gwen Jones. Gwen has been a staunch advocate for addressing the pressing issue of climate change and its effect on our community, and she has exhibited a tireless advocacy for addressing the affordable housing crisis facing Missoula. Gwen brings tangible solutions to the problems that are faced by the city of Missoula, and having Gwen Jones on the city council is an investment into the city, and it's an investment that will pay out in the form of progress for many, many years. In Ward four, Amber Sherrill. I really hope everyone here gets a chance to meet and get to know Amber. She is without a doubt one of the most sincere, incredible people you will ever meet. I don't think I have enough time tonight to name all the different groups, boards and organizations that Amber Sherrill has dedicated her time, passion and leadership to because I'd be up here all night. She led the effort to pass the Open Space Bond as well in 2018, which is going to protect our waterways, our open land and our agricultural soils, and it was passed in a landslide. Amber Sherrill is Missoula. Amber Sherrill is the embodiment of public service and dedication to our community, and we need her voice and her commitment on city council. In Ward five, Alex Figariot. As mentioned, Alex unfortunately couldn't be here tonight because of a prior scheduled vacation, but is well-deserving of our endorsement. He's been active in our community in a variety of groups, and he's going to bring a perspective to city council that's hard to come by as he has worked as a laborer in construction. He's been a high school teacher and he's the owner of a small business. That perspective will no doubt aid in his decision-making on the pressing issues that are faced by our city council. And finally, in Ward six, Nick Shantz. Nick is another one whose questionnaire is well worth the read because it is chock-full of well-thought-out ideas and solutions. It is clear that Nick has invested his time and his energy into Missoula and will come to every city council meeting prepared and with answers. Nick is a future city council member who will research every facet of every angle of the problems that need fixing here, and we should get behind his effort to be elected in Ward six. Thanks.
Hi. I am not a public official, I am not a delegate. My name is Beth Hayes, I'm just a Missoulian, and I am a consumer protection attorney in town. And I really am just here tonight to support or encourage you all to support a person I have come to know since she came to Missoula six years ago, Elizabeth Weaver in Ward one. She is a doer, she is a hard worker, she is a perspective that is desperately needed. She understands what it is to try to help people in a different way. You know, there's a sort of a barrier, I think, at times to jumping into this political world. And I think that I would just encourage everybody to take the time to consider her attitude, her ability to be thoughtful, be educated, and keep in mind all people of all income levels when shaping Missoula's policy in the future. Thank you.
All right, I'll be brief. As Brian has explained and as all of you know from reading the papers and talking about it, there's a Republican assault on the city council led by Jesse Ramos. And it's a nonpartisan race, so you don't know who, you don't know who the Democrat or the Republican is unless you do research or you get the stamp of the Missoula Democrats. And in that perspective, from that perspective, I would encourage you, number one, and those- And in that perspective, from that perspective, I would encourage you, number one, in those, in those wards where it applies, to vote for a single candidate so that we can point to exactly who the most qualified Democrats are. So in Ward One, that's Heidi West, who is running for reelection. And you've already heard great things about her. In Ward Two, it's Murtha. In Ward Three, it's Gwen Jones, who also has a stellar track record. And then we have Amber Sherrill in Ward Four, who I've known for years and she is really as terrific as people have told you. And Alex Fregario in Ward Five, who's not here, but again, you know, highly praised. And in Ward Six, it's, you know, it's obvious, there's only one choice really. It's Nick Schantz. So we gotta vote, vote for those guys and vote for only one so that we don't dilute our vote. And that's it for me.
For those who don't know me, I'm Pam Walzer. I used to serve on city council. And as little as 12 years ago, the city council was split six-six on, I'd like to call them regressives versus progressives. And so it wasn't very long ago when we didn't have this wealth of progressive voice on the city council. So this is very important that we take this seriously. It can go back. And, and folks are trying to turn it back to having a very divisive, regressive policies. So with that, as far as some of the different candidates, first, I'll talk about the person who was holding the seat that I used to hold, and that's Mirta Basara. I was so excited when she stepped up and asked to be appointed to this seat. I've known Mirta when I was on council and I was so respected her knowledge and her opinions and very pleased to see an extraordinarily qualified, hard-working person in that seat. So I hope you will definitely give her your endorsement and work very hard. Ward Two is schizophrenic. It's the one where you have all of the recounts. We're going to work and need to work very hard. I won my first election with 90 votes out of 2,000, lost my reelection with five votes out of 2,000. So we need your help in Ward Two to, to elect Mirta to that, to that important seat. When it comes to Ward One, I've been working with Heidi West as I'm on the board for NMCDC and I've been so impressed with her knowledge and her abilities to conquer problems. And she's just extraordinarily qualified, experienced, has lots of innovative ideas. And we need to keep those, those thoughts going. In fact, I'm really essentially endorsing all of the incumbents. Heidi has shown that she's, knows what she's doing. She works hard. She's got a lot of different ideas. And Gwen Jones likewise is a force to be reckoned with. And reading Amber Sherrill's and Alex and Nick's questionnaires, thank you. It's been a long day for me, sorry. They have, they also show lots of impressive and lots of different experiences that will do well on council. So with that, I hope you will vote for all six of those. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I, I'm Jacob Elder and I'm a member of the community, a Marine veteran and, and an incoming first-year law student at the University of Montana. I grew up in Helena. I, I've lived in Missoula and, you know, been in and out. But I greatly care about this community and I think one of the things that have really scared me recently, it's, you know, this Jesse Ramos guy. It's just a lot of things about him that is just really frightening. As Nate, as Chase stated, how that, his support for Mitch McConnell and, and, and those guys, you know, that's something that we all should be afraid of. Jesse is a threat to our city and he's, he's a threat to the, the future of the city. So I support all candidates that are going to fight, fight the strong, fight a strong fight to, to, you know, to uphold the, the values of our community, which is progressive. And, and we're going to keep it that way. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Are there any others that want to come up to the podium? Okay. It is time for our voting. So could Chase, Nancy, okay, they're going to distribute the ballots to everyone that has a sticker. Oh, and Mary. So as ballots are distributed, Leanne, could you, there we go, the voting procedures. No write-ins will be counted or considered. Vote for as many or as few as you want. Sign your ballot. One vote per candidate in wards two, three, five, and six. You can vote for one, two, or three in Ward One. And you can vote for one or two in Ward Four. So we'll give you a few minutes and then they'll collect the ballots. Does everyone have a ballot? Does anyone not have a ballot that has a sticker? No, I don't have a ballot. We'll collect the ballots. Hold your ballot up high if you're, if you're finished. Is there anyone that doesn't have a ballot picked up yet that is completed? Please raise your hand. Put your ballot in the air. Thank you. While the ballots are being counted, Todd and Charlie are going to count the ballots. I want to talk about some upcoming events. Leanne, cue the events. All right. Thank you. Coming up first on our agenda is the Missoula County Democrats' Picnic, Sunday, July 21st, from four to seven. That is going to be at Silver Park. We have invited all our statewide candidates and all are coming. Senator Tester won't be available, but we have a full slate of the rest of our statewide legislators and candidates coming. We invited every single presidential candidate, but they all said no. We gave it a try. The county fair is coming up. We're going to have a booth at that, August 7th through 11th. And of course, as you heard Chase so eloquently talk about earlier, canvassing for city council. We are going to have canvassing training at the Union Club in the conference room in the basement. We're going to have that on a regular basis. It'll be canvassing 101. You will be given talking points and information and to go out and canvas for our endorsed candidates that we'll be hearing about here pretty quick. So how you can get involved is by signing up. We have signup sheets back here by the food. Oh, they're up here, up front. Pam is going to be putting them up front. So before you go tonight, and maybe while we're taking some time while they tally the votes, please consider signing up for one of these three things. Pam needs help with the picnic. And Pam is also, thank you Pam Walzer, is heading up our presence at the August Fair. So there will be shifts needed for volunteers to fill, shifts at the fair. And of course, our canvassing for city council. As Chase said, that's really, really important. And this begins our Army for 2020. This, this is how we start. We build our army now. We, we work really hard for our endorsed candidates that we will endorse tonight. And, and we build and expand that army by getting out and doing it. So what you can expect, once you sign up in one of these three ways, or all of them if you like, you can expect that we will give you a call and contact you about whatever your desire is to help and volunteer. We'll make sure you're contacted. So with that, do we have a slide on the picnic that we can put up and? Oh, nope. Back up, back up. We do want to talk about. Stay up to date. How do you do that? So with a large group like we've got, and thankfully, we do have a large group. We've been filling precinct chairs, precinct committee people. And we want to reach out to the greater community as well. So we are focusing some energy on our website. We, it's the same design, but a lot more information. We have a blog that's going to be very timely, that will include things about what's going on in the community. At times when you can call for, your calls are needed, like on the Blackfoot Clearwater project and calls were needed. Klaus wrote a blog on that. I wrote one on upcoming events. So that's a good thing to know and check out frequently. We also have an events page, a tab in our website. That's where you go to hear about all upcoming events. We had a very successful trivia night. We're looking forward to doing that again. That's where you can go to find out, when is that trivia night going to be? How you can be involved. So please check that out. We also have a very active presence on Facebook, where we're keeping that up to date with news and articles, as well as all our events going on. So please check that out. Yep. While we're waiting here, let's, I'd like to call on Klaus to nominate our new central committee members. One second. Okay. Just one sec. And Klaus has some new central committee members that he's going to be nominating and we will be voting on.
These are nominations for precinct committee men and women and/or alternates. So for Franklin 100N, I nominate Deana Dewire as precinct committee woman. For Hawthorne 98N, I nominate Barbara Merrifield as alternate precinct committee woman. And Lowell 95, I nominate Sarah Fitzgerald as alternate precinct committee woman. Rattlesnake 91E, I nominate Juniper Davis as precinct committee woman. And Rattlesnake 91E, I'm nominating Anna Conley as alternate committee woman. In St. Joseph 100 East, I nominate Brian McDonald as alternate committee man. And Rattlesnake 91W, I recommend, I recommend, nominate Jacob Elder as alternate precinct committee man. Now those are, and then Nancy Cerber is here, right? Where is she, Nancy? Okay. You're a Democrat, right? Right. And you live at wherever you said you live at. Okay. So I nominate Nancy Cerber as an alternate precinct committee woman for Hawthorne 98S. Is anybody here whom I forgot? Okay. Apparently not. Good, because I screwed up last time. So, call for them.
We ask for a motion. No? Okay. We got the, okay. I told you guys I was learning my Robert's rules. I studied them today. Obviously not enough. So with that, I'd like to ask for a voice, vote. All those in favor of all those Klaus nominated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations, new members of the central committee. We welcome you and you'll get your secret handshake afterwards. All right. How's the vote tallying coming along? We have a few more minutes, Todd and Charlie? Oh, yeah. Okay. So I would suggest we take a few minutes and have some, oh, fundraising?
We've got a big fundraising goal.
All right. That is, that is something we should talk about with a captive audience. Good use of the time. Thanks, Pam. We have a fundraising goal of $5,000 by the end of September. You probably all saw that. We did a big push earlier this week on that. It's to help our candidates first and foremost. It's to elect Democrats. That's what this is about. Everything we do, I'm going to ask that question. How does it help elect Democrats? What are the measures of success that we're, we're getting from these events that we're doing? From our picnic, from our presence at the county fair? We'll be doing measurements of those, but they all cost money. Okay. Time for the meeting to come to order. Is my microphone still working? Okay. Please come to order. We have our results. Chase? Chase, can you get me one of those smaller microphones? One of the handheld ones, maybe? Is my microphone working or, they were saying it needs to turn off.
No. No. Pass here, yes.
I can't, yeah, let's get a smaller one. Is this better? All right. Okay. Before I announce the, the candidates who will receive our endorsement, we've got one last order of business. So I'd ask Klaus to take over here.
We just had a, I won't call her Walkin because she's been here, but anyway. So I nominate Laksmi von Hoffman for St. Joseph 100 East as an alternate. Sorry, I'm laughing because it's so close to my name. That's it.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The ayes have it. Welcome. Thank you for being here and for wanting to join. All right.